This day you know.
Okay, it is now. Six oh three P M. This is the the meeting of the Arundel Planning Board on July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four. We have an administrative appeal application that we will be reviewing.
I move that we move to executive session with our town attorneys to consider this matter.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Jamie Lowry to go to executive session. All those in favor?
Do we lock the door in case someone?
No, we're going, we're going to move into the offices themselves.
Okay, good.
Okay, it is unanimous. We will pause the recording. Okay. Now. Who's making the motion? Tom, Tom made a motion to come out of.
No, no, Marty.
Marty made a motion to come out of executive session. Tom seconded. We are out at seven fifty one, seven fifty two. Six, you're right, I'm sorry. Six, six, six fifty four, according to my watch.
You need a vote on that?
Yes.
Yes. All those in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Okay, cool. I'm gonna pause the recording until the applicant shows up.
It seems to be turning itself off.
Green, the light has to be on.
Yeah, it was, and then it turned itself off.
He might need batteries.
Well, we can try to speak.
I have. Two batteries here, but I don't know if they work. These, these were from the select. It's now seven oh two P M. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It's July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four. We are in the municipal meeting room. To hear one item. We have a public hearing for administrative appeal. Don't, I should ask for approval of the agenda, shouldn't I?
You can prove.
Second. Motion by, was that Jamie?
Tom.
Tom. Motion by Tom, seconded by Marty to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Hi.
We have new business. We have an administrative appeal application, appeal of the Staff Review Committee decision for Kennybunk River Food Court. Adam Burches and Jennifer Wasson are the applicants and owners of the property located on Tax Map thirty five, Lot One. They are appealing the decision of the Arundel Staff Review Committee on May twentieth, two thousand and twenty four.
Point of interest.
Yeah, Marty.
Uh, just so let it know that I have know the recipient, and I do not have, I don't think we have a conflict of interest. For clarification.
Okay, you just know him. You're not doing business with him or anything? You're not, you're not doing any business with him? You just know him?
No.
Okay, I don't have a problem with it.
Just clarify it so it's noted.
Any of the board have an issue?
No.
Okay. Does the applicant have an issue?
No.
No. Okay. We do not.
Do you wanna? Make your address now?
Sure.
Okay, the town attorney has a couple of items that she wants to discuss.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, just because it's my understanding that this board has actually not in recent or even distant memory. Entertained an appeal of a staff review committee decision. So everyone thought for the benefit of the board members, the public, for the applicant, that it might be a behoove us all just to get a quick rundown of what the process is. What that looks like and what the standard of review should be. And so. That is that, in essence, what you'd like me to address?
In essence, yes.
Okay, all right. So luckily, the ordinance actually provides a pretty good roadmap in that regard. And so Section ten, ten, one of the land use ordinance kind of tells us how these kinds of appeals should be conducted. And so I'm just gonna talk about some basic threshold issues, like every municipal. Appeal, the folks who are asking for that appeal have to demonstrate standing. And that's one of the, there's a couple of thresholds and determinations that must be made, whether the applicants have standing, whether the appeal was filed timely. And basically what the authority of this, and then I can talk about what the authority of this board, what it can do, what it can't do, and also how the board should be addressing, what the standard of review is that they're going to apply. So when it comes to standing, that one's pretty easy. We like easy ones. As the property owner who applied for the permit, they were denied. I think it's pretty clear that they have standing. Second threshold issue is a timeliness issue, and that is basically in the event that the appeal was not filed in a timely way. By the deadline specified in the ordinance, then this board lacks jurisdiction to hear it. But my understanding is, and of course, this is for the board's determination, that the decision was made by the Staff Review Committee on May twentieth. That a written decision was emailed to the applicant on May twenty third, that I note the appeal to this board was received on June twelfth. That is, by my calculation, twenty days, they got in under the wire, so that's a timely appeal. Again, that's your determination, but that is what my understanding of the evidence is. As far as authority, what is this board's authority? What can they do? What can't they do? What should they do? Again, that's pretty clear. It says that, you know. Once they hear the submissions from all of the parties, when I say the parties, you have the appellants or the applicants here. I believe there's probably a representative of the Staff Review Committee here. Who can address. So usually the order of operations, the applicant goes first, the, the, either the party or the board that's defending the denial will go and talk about why they did that. Each side can have their opportunity to make whatever submissions they want to make and present whatever evidence they would like to make. I understand that the appellants have already submitted evidence along with their, their submissions. And so I think it's very important that always the applicant gets the last word. So after you hear from the other side. Also, any members of the public who wish to speak, then you get to play cleanup essentially to address anything that you wish to address. Okay? The question is always who bears the burden of proof? And as in any kind of appeal, it's always the appellant who bears that burden to show that they have satisfied. That the ordinance requirements are met and that they're entitled to the relief that they're asking for. Excuse me. This is the important piece, and this is kind of the tricky one, just because this board has not entertained these appeals before. So what is the standard? What is the standard of review, we call it? And there are two kinds that it can be. Either it's appellate, and I'm throwing some legal jargon at you, but it's pretty basic concepts. There's an appellate standard review, and there's a de novo, which means from, from the beginning. So in an appellate standard, basically this board, when reviewing whether or not the staff review committee got it right or got it wrong, would be limited to only that information that the staff, that the staff review committee had in front of it at the time they made their decision. That's appellate review. That's not this. Here, there's a, what's called a de novo review, and basically that means it's afresh, it's from the beginning. So you get to hear whatever new evidence. That the parties want you to hear, okay? But with that said, that doesn't mean that the entire decision is opened. The appellant essentially sets the four corners of what they're appealing. My understanding is that they are not reopening the entire thing. There are ten criteria under the ordinance that were reviewed for compliance. Only one was denied, that's subsection six. And so what this appeal is limited to is the four corners of whether or not the staff review committee got it right or wrong with respect to their denial based on that subsection six, okay? So while the four corners of the appeal are limited to that issue, the evidence and the arguments on that issue are, this board is not confined to what the staff review committee had before it when they made that decision. I know it's a little complicated, but I hope that that makes sense for, for everybody. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if there was a question there.
Well, I was just gonna, I just was hoping to clarify one point on that.
Yeah, go ahead. Speaking, speaking to the mic.
Oh, sorry. I'm just wondering.
Is then basically any new information only related to the points of denial or to point number six as an open ended criteria?
Oh, I think, I think i- if the issue is whether or not the staff committee got it right or wrong with respect to that, that subsection six, I think it's, it's.
Okay, because we were basically denied on two points, and those are the points that we were, it was our understanding that those are the points we would be discussing.
Absolutely, you can address those. And if new things come up, you have the opportunity to address them. You're not limited to that. Okay? And, and the board may have questions for you on those issues, and of course, you're here and will, ready, willing, and able to address those issues. Okay? So as I said, what decision has been appealed from? I think it is limited to the four corners of the, I mean, and, and frankly, you were approved on all the other ones, so I can't imagine you'd want to appeal from those in any event. Right? So. So it's just that standard number six. I'm just gonna read it for everybody's benefit. It's nice to be reminded of what that standard is, that the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite and offsite impact upon the existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or neighborhood. That's the standard. That's what we're here to discuss tonight. One thing I will say is that, again, the applicant has made their submissions as to the various grounds of appeal, and I think just for the record, it's important to clarify the, the, the grounds that we have. I have two documents, one that was in the application itself. And bear with me here. That is entitled Addendum one, and it goes through A, B, C, D, E, those various, you know, basis for appeal. But I also have another document, and we're just clarifying here that it says project synopsis, Kennybunk River Food Court Appeal. And I want to clarify, is that also relevant to this appeal, or is that some, in some other context?
That is relative, I should say.
It's, it's relative to the application process that we went to. I recognize that it may not be relevant here in this forum, but could be relevant in the future.
Okay, you're exactly right. And so what I'd like to just clarify for the record, for you, for the members of the public and for the board, is that. This board's authority is limited to determining whether or not the staff review committee got it right or wrong on the conditions, not the conditions, but the provisions of Section ten, okay? So these concerns that you've raised are properly raised. In fact, if we ever go to court on this, you would have to have raised them to preserve them. But to your point, and you're exactly right, that they are not relevant to this board's determination, constitutional issues, due process, you know, equal protection, those kinds of issues, this board does not have the authority to consider. So you did, you did it right. You're supposed to preserve them for the record, but this board is not authorized to consider those.
Okay.
Your appeal. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. All right. So with that said, I think that, you know, we talk about just rules of the road. Order of operations. It's, it's, it's not specified in this ordinance, but you know. Sort of. Tradition dictates that the applicant goes first, then they turn it over to the member of, or whoever from the staff review committee who would like to address it. And when I say the applicant, if you have any folks here, I don't know if you have any experts or whomever.
We, we do actually have Tom Arico here from TY Lin. As you probably know, TY Lin is traffic engineering firm, so he's here and can address traffic questions if needed.
Great. So that will happen. I think this board tends to be somewhat informal, that if they have questions during the presentations, either of your, you or your experts are making that, is that fair to say, Mr. Chairman, that you'll?
Yes, it is.
And then, you know.
We would ask that the public. Hold any comments. You will get an opportunity to speak, but at this point, while the applicant is presenting their case. Please don't. Speak out of turn.
That's right. And so the applicant and their experts will go, staff review committee and whatever evidence they want to present will go, then members of the public have an opportunity, and then, as I said, the applicant always gets to play, sweep up, you know, clean up at the end to address anything you'd like to do. So with that, unless the board or anybody else has any questions, that's.
Thank you. Please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Well, first, thank you for being here at seven o'clock at night to hear us. I appreciate it. And I know you've already been provided with a lot of the background information, so I will not try to rehash that, and we'll try to get to our points here. Basically, we're here because we believe that the reasons for denial were arbitrary, factually incorrect, and also lacked supporting evidence. More specifically, we believe that we met the burden of proof with regards to approval criteria, point number six. As I'm sure you've read, we were denied based on two reasons, the number of curb openings and poor site visibility. There was no further explanation given to us or evidence shown to support these findings at the time. Additionally, main DOT had already approved our permit for our entrance. Without any limitations. The number of curb openings was never discussed as an issue until it was mentioned in our final staff review meeting. We've also never found a mention of minimum or maximum number of feet around a site. Sorry, minimum or maximum curb openings within the vicinity of a site. We've not been able to find that in the ordinance. In two thousand and twenty two, the Bonnet Food Court opposite Bentley's opened up on a portion of Route one with twice the number of curb openings within a quarter mile. And this was not a gating issue for them. And we don't know if it was brought up as an issue. You'll find a map that supports that in our packet. For the record, they were not required to submit a traffic report, a wetlands delineation, a drainage plan, or any of those items, and were approved within a month. Regarding poor site visibility, this reason for denial, we feel is simply not accurate. Our site visibility has been measured at four hundred plus feet by TY Lin and was measured by the main DOT engineers as part of the entrance approval. Site visibility from our Route one entrance and exit was never disputed by the town before our final staff review. Additionally. Oh, wait, sorry, I lost my place here. And the town has not shown any evidence to refute the findings of TY Lin or the main DOT. Additionally, since our denial on the recommendation of James Rather, we rented a laser distance meter and recorded and photographed the findings. Based on the measurement guidelines set forth in the ordinance, turning left out of our exit, the laser indicates a site visibility of four hundred and forty two feet. Site visibility turning right is well behind five hundred feet and is not in question. And you may already know, but the, the ordinance states three hundred and fifty feet. At our second, second staff review meeting, after six months of obtaining reports and delineations to meet various ordinance criteria, we were told that our final hurdle would be ensuring that traffic impact concerns were addressed. At the recommendation of the town planner, we were advised to obtain a traffic engineering study, and TY Lin came highly recommended. We were told that if our traffic report numbers and conclusions were favorable, that we would most likely meet all of the ordinance criteria for approval. So we went ahead and funded the traffic study, and we received a report with very favorable conclusions. If you've had a chance to look at the traffic report conclusions, you will have seen that they do not raise any problematic traffic concerns. Once we submitted this traffic report to the town, we attended our final staff review meeting. We were expecting it to follow the same format as previous staff review meetings, because we had already had two of them. We anticipated. Being able to discuss the evidence and the conclusions from the traffic report. And we anticipated having the right to respond to any remaining concerns. Raised by the town. Instead, the town planner opened with a brief discussion of general traffic safety concerns, and then he explained that he had visited the site location over the weekend and that he just didn't think it was going to work. Then our application was immediately moved to a vote and was denied. The meeting was adjourned in a matter of minutes, maybe five at the max. We were never given the opportunity to be heard, and the traffic study data was never even mentioned or addressed. The town did not supply any factual evidence, reporting, or documentation on their side for us to either hear or review. To support their reasons for denial. So as you consider our appeal, we would kindly ask that you keep the following rule of thumb in mind. This is a direct quote from the main municipal association's manual for local planning boards, which we've spent a lot of time looking at, the general rules section. It states. The board should not base its decision on the amount of public opposition or support displayed for the project. Nor should its decision be based on the members' general opinion that the project would be good or bad for the community. The decision should be based solely on whether the applicant has met his or her burden of proof and complied with the provisions of the statute or ordinance. We would argue that between our main DOT entrance permit approval and our traffic study findings. That we've met the burden of proof that could be reasonably expected for the traffic impact section of the criteria for approval. And I will pass the mic, so.
Do you have anything to say, sir?
Uh, hello. Yes, thank you. I'd just like to add. In, in response to the. Main DOT's. Report, there's been some. Some dialogue or communication within the town staff and board that there's unfavorable documentation.
There has been no discussion.
Okay.
In this board regarding any documentation.
So James Rather told me that there was a letter or document from main DOT that showed negative. Negative or unfavorable. Reports for our, despite our entrance approval. And so I, I did ask James if I could see a copy of this, and I asked a couple other staff members, and there was no response. So then I did ask our, the main DOT, and I spoke to Van, he's the permit specialist, and he said. I work at main DOT Region one, which is the southern region. I have checked with the southern region engineer and southern region traffic engineer, and we do not have record of a report or letter sent to the town about your location. Main DOT approved your entrance permit. There was not a reason to deny the permit or restrict access with mitigation. I recommend you contact. Uh, the town or select person, he didn't understand who exactly it was, and have them provide a copy of the letter or report they claim that main DOT sent to them. If and when the town provides the letter, please send a copy to me. I, I left it at that. And then, you know, we had Tom also reach out just to, just to make sure that there wasn't some other documentation, because we had, someone alluded to it, and so obviously.
Well, we'd actually heard it from three different sources, and I don't want to point fingers, but there was talk going on about an unfavorable report.
Right. So obviously, there was concern on our part. And, and just Randy also said, Tom, to Tom, he said, we don't have any record of the department noting traffic concerns. The entrance meets our rules. If you find documentation or any traffic concerns from the department, please forward it to me. I just wanted to put those on record, because I think they're pretty important. At that, for that reason.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we have those emails that yours, so many can, so just because we're creating a record here, would you be able to give us copies of that?
I can give you.
Fantastic. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
What are the proposed hours for the food truck park?
So I think it was.
I know you also said. I, I actually might have it here. It was probably quite broad at the beginning. We're open to obviously changing the hours. I think most food trucks.
Sure, it was either ten to seven or eleven to seven, depending on if there was a coffee truck or a breakfast type of truck there, but it was not going to go late into the night.
Seven days a week.
I think seven was gonna be the cutoff.
Was it, was it like for weekends only, only during the weekdays?
It's seasonal. It would have been. It would have been daily. I mean, really, it comes down to allowing. A vendor to be there, sort of, they set their hours, but it seems by watching the other courts, most are closed on Mondays and Tuesdays and start gearing up for the weekend around Wednesday or Thursday.
Yeah.
And they run till, sometimes they're closed on Sunday early.
So the reason I'm asking is just because. Obviously, you guys had the report done by TY Lin. You know, the, the information that was provided in that was they used some traffic counts from main DOT, I assume it's a typo, but from September of two thousand and twenty two, not two thousand and twenty four. And they were done on, I think, a Tuesday and a Wednesday. So I wasn't sure if the proposal, because it said seasonal, if that was gonna be during those months, there isn't a lot of information in there about. You know, the, those of us that live here and people who visit know that the summer months are obviously much busier, busier on Route one during that time. And obviously not during the weekend, which is primarily the most busy part of that area. So I wasn't sure if.
I've not been my idea.
Yeah, I, I didn't know if, if the hours were restricted to, okay, we're only gonna do it during the week and in September, or if it was gonna be during the summer months and then.
I mean, I think when we, when we, when we applied, we made the window quite wide, because. We didn't need to see the limitations before we had vendors. Vendors typically aren't gonna be, I couldn't imagine a vendor being at a food court at seven in the morning. So I think realistically, it would be seven, eleven to seven or eight, just the window.
Yeah.
I'm, that's.
Okay.
If that answers your question. So, so maybe, maybe it's best if I give a little, a little presentation on, on the analysis I did, and I think it would, hopefully it'll be responsive to, to your question. Uh, Tom Arico, Senior Associate at TY Lin. My office is in Falmouth. I live in Kennybunk, so I know the area pretty well. Lived in Kennybunk for over thirty years. So Adam, you know, contracted TY Lin to do, do the study. I've been doing traffic work for a long time. These types of studies, you know, generally focus in on a few things. One. Does it meet criteria for a traffic movement permit, which is a something, a study that would look at capacity? Does it impact mobility on a roadway? That's sort of part one of, 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 of an analysis based upon our, our estimates, and DOT confirmed it. It does not require a traffic movement permit. So the level of traffic that's generated by the site is not significant enough to, to jump it to looking at roadway capacity, whether it be on a Saturday or a weekday. The things that matter the most with these kinds of developments are driveway location, quite frankly. Um, and site distance. You know, those are the two key variables that, that we sort of focus in on, you know, with a driveway. And so from the site distance perspective. Um, I actually measured it myself. Sometimes I have staff do it, but because I live locally, I went out and measured it, and as, as noted in the report, it meets site distance requirement, not only for DOT. DOT standards a little bit less than, than the towns. DOT standards three hundred and five feet, town is three hundred and fifty feet in terms of the requirement for, for site distance. The driveway meets site distance requirements, which is why also the DOT approved a driveway permit. They, they will specifically look at those two issues in great detail. They're quite conservative with issuing permits, and so they issued permits. They issued the permit for this site because it met site distance, and it met something called corner clearance, which is something related to the location of the driveway. Is the driveway located in a location that is safe as it relates to intersections or other driveways? And based upon the location and the standards, it meets something called that corner clearance requirement. So basically, it checked the box on site distance, checked the box on corner clearance, and checked the box on, it's not gonna generate, generate a significant amount of traffic that's gonna require the need for turn lanes or evaluation of capacity. It's not something that's required for this level of, of sort of, you know, density from a traffic perspective. The other thing we looked at, which is, which is typical, is safety. You know, are there any existing crash patterns that exist in, in, you know, in the vicinity of the project that would be of concern? That, that certainly if there's an existing crash problem or safety problem, that would be something that would, you know, elevate, you know, you know, interest in sort of digging into that and, and seeing whether there are some sort of problems that ought to be, you know, potentially mitigated that could be worsened by, by a development, any type of development. And looking at crash data, it's pretty, pretty standard practice, DOT standard practice, we look at, we look at three years of data. And they have a, DOT is a tremendous safety database system that evaluates. Um, and they have a, DOT is a tremendous safety database system that evaluates high crash locations in the state. And there are no high crash locations in the vicinity of this project. So, so fundamentally, the Route One in this area doesn't have any high crash locations. Meets site distance requirements. The location of driveway complies with standards for location. Um, and traffic levels aren't such that it meets, that it meets the need for, for a TNP. So. So, you know, I'll just, you know, that's, that's just my quick summary, you know, in terms of, you know, the analysis we did. Um, and, and I'm happy to answer any questions you, you may have, um, you know, you know, you know, related to traffic.
Anything from the board?
I just want to make sure I, I understand what you were saying. So. The report like specifically says that the traffic counts from DOT that were used. Were done in September. Again, I'm assuming is a typo that it's 2022. And that regardless of. Days of the week or really time of year, the, the amount of traffic or the traffic pattern in that area is low enough. That this proposal won't impact it regardless of time of day or time of year.
Yeah, it's not that, it's not that. The, the, the amount of traffic generated by the project wouldn't trigger the need to look at the infrastructure in terms of, you know, is it going to create capacity issues?
What is the limit for that?
Excuse me?
What, what would be the limit?
A hundred peak hour trips. So if you, if a site generates a hundred peak hour trips, that's the trigger.
A day, I assume.
An hour.
An hour.
An hour, an hour, a hundred peak hour trips. So it's an hour. If you, if you meet that threshold, then you're required, well, DOT would then step in, require something called a traffic movement permit. You would have a scoping meeting with the community. Um, and you would develop basically a traffic impact study that would look at. A much broader thing. And actually you could look at intersections in Kennybunk, could look up intersections up Route One. It starts to get broader in terms of an impacted analysis. This is nowhere near that level in terms of, you know, the trip generation level. Um, in terms of the volume, you know, quite frankly, we didn't go out and do any counts. DOT does these coverage counts. They do them generally every two years. And they happen at various times of the year, depending upon where you're located. So those, those were in September. That's when, that's when they did those counts. They're higher in the summer. I mean, I mean, we all know, they're higher in the summer. We all know that, you know, I mean, I mean, it's, you know, and so. You know, I mean, you know, it's, um, that's the worst case time period.
So if. Would then any business that doesn't. Uh, accumulate a hundred additional vehicles an hour, then wouldn't reach that threshold? Is that right?
Well.
Right. Cause you said it's like a hundred trips an hour would then require that traffic.
Correct.
So as long as the business wouldn't generate a hundred vehicles. Within an hour, then they wouldn't be required to do.
They generate less than a hundred, they would not require that study.
Okay.
Correct. Now, now, I mean, I mean, I mean, I do a lot of work for a lot of municipalities. Town staff with a planning board could ask of a study. If, you know, in terms of local site plan review, they can ask for a study just as part of just local site plan approval and review. Um, but DOT would step in if it's a hundred trips or more.
Okay.
In an hour.
So I had a, a somewhat of a follow-up on that point. Um, what would you, in your knowledge of the area? How, what would you think a typical percentage increase would be from a September count to a, you know, mid-July count? Would it be 10% more, 20% more? What, just a general sense?
Good question. Um, well, I mean, one thing, and you, I mean, I'm sure you experienced it because I do. September's busy now, right? I mean, I mean, right? I mean, we're finding that that peak is spreading.
Sure.
You know, so June, June, July, August, September. Now it's like, it's so, so. Um, you know, typically, typically like in urban areas, you see like a 15% bump, you know, in terms of, you know, peak summertime to. Sort of, you know, I'll see the, the shoulder months. Um, you know, certainly a lot less than middle winter, you know?
Yeah. And then a follow-up on that and looking at your traffic assessment and the counts, um, that you had of a roughly 30 trip-ins, I think. In the peak hour, that looked like it was based on the, the average amount in the, um. On the, the data sheet.
Right, the, the trip generation manual.
What would the, the, the fitted curve number would have been slightly higher, somewhere around 45, 46?
A little bit higher probably.
Um, what's the, what's the rationale of using one versus, one number versus the other? And in your opinion, would that, you know, roughly 50% increase? Make a significant difference in your conclusions and findings of the study?
Yeah. Yeah. So first, first typically, whether you use the fitted curve. Um, information or the average rate is based upon the statistical significance of the database and how many, how many samples you have within it. And so for, in this case, we used average. Um, and no, I don't, it wouldn't change the conclusions of, of, you know, of our, of, of my analysis, you know, whether it was bumped up by. You know, that, that additional amount, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't change the permit requirements. Um, you know, and so, um, no.
What type of businesses typically reach that 100 trips an hour threshold? I mean, are we talking like? A Macy's or Hannaford? Right. Like that size of.
Hannaford is much more.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm not like, as an example, like does a, you know, a yoga studio do that? Or like, what, what are we looking for? Yeah.
We always say, so, so like Hannaford generates probably, I just did a, I just did some work in Thompson for the market basket. That generates 900 peak hour trips. So it gives you sense. But like, probably like a hundred single family houses would generate about a hundred trips would be, that's what you would say.
Interesting.
I can add a, a little to that. I, I went through some of the site applications for the Farmer's Daughter and for VIP. And VIP was a hundred or more and Farmer's Daughter was 33.
Okay.
And they did not do a traffic report. They, they waived it and were granted a waiver.
I just want to get an idea of like, size of scope of what we're looking at. Yeah.
So I, I have a question. On the traffic study. Let's see if I can find that spot. One of the, one of the places that you cite. Is in Oregon. In 2010.
Yeah.
Really?
Uh, it's so.
I, I struggle with that, that I, I don't find something that is 14 years old to be that relevant. I spent, and something on the West Coast, which is completely different than the East Coast.
Understood, understood. So, so a little, a little sort of background on that. Um, that's, that's our methodology that we use in the industry that's been, that we're directed to use as part of Maine DOT's process. They asked you to use something, something called the IT Trip Generation Manual. It's a, it's a document that's very thick and they're constantly updating databases within it. And some of it's still old, like you said, and some of it's, it's, it's basically a national database that all traffic engineers in the country use. And it's sprinkled with data from the Southwest, Northeast. And so where the hell do you use that? And so, um, you know, in terms of DOT methodology and, and direction. And so it has some of that stuff into, in it. And I, you know, so, um, it's the, it's the best we have. Um, and, and, and that's how we approach, you know, our, our studies, you know, and so. Um, you know, I mean, I, I know it's not, you know, the perfect answer because it, you know, it's, it's, you know, it does. It does stand out, right? I mean, obviously you looked at something in 2010 that's in Oregon. It's, it's what we, it's what we use and what DOT requires.
Can you, sorry, could you point where that is?
I'm not, I'd like to also add, sorry, I'd like to also add that, um, in one, and I believe it's the second review. I had been, um, monitoring the food court and the lobster truck and it was in. Benet Food Court and Lobster Truck. And at the time that was, I believe in June, late June, I had the highest number was six per any 45 minute. Uh, time was cars parked in the lot. And then more recently. It was last weekend was 11 cars at the Benet Truck Food Court was the most I saw at one time. So I just, just to give you a. Block part there.
And I'll just, I'll just note this, it, it, you know, do we, do we always use that trip generation manual? No, there are some times where we'll go and count actual. You know, land uses as part of, because they're unique in some way. And we'll go ahead and count them because they may not in, they may not be in the manual. And typically we will coordinate with. You know, whether it be the state or a community about, you know, that process, you know, and so we were never asked about that. Like, you know, maybe you ought to go do a count, Tom, you know, and so, you know, and so, you know, basically we, I developed a report that met DOT, you know, methodologies. Um, and there was no questioning about it, um, you know, about doing something different. So, you know, which is, you know, pretty standard in terms of how we approach, you know, project.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to thank you very much and we're going to hear from. Terry on the Staff Review Committee.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Evening.
Basically, I'm going to be pretty brief.
Speak into the mic, Terry. We need, we need to record this. Yeah. And yes, tell us who you are and what your position is.
My name is Terry Merrill. I'm the Public Works Director for the Town of Arundel. Um, like I said, I'm going to be pretty brief. Um, it's a shame that. Two of the members, um, Randall Toddiff has retired. He was on the Staff Review Committee. Also, Lee Jay is not with us anymore. He's gone to Kennybunk. So there's two members right there that I wish could have been here tonight to also support our findings. But, um, basically we based our denial on the fact of. Um. Basically the traffic, it is gonna, uh, we think it's going to impact traffic quite a bit. Um, I did, um, do a video of the traffic. That is backed up from Ross Road all the way around to VIP. And in saying that, um. You add the food trucks into that. You know, scenario. Food, uh. Traffic trying to get in and out of there. And traffic being backed up that far is just gonna, you know, in our opinion was going to wreak havoc. And basically our. Um, stand on this also is. As part of the Staff Review Committee and part of being Public Works Director, there's a place in here. On the land use ordinance. Says. The purpose of the site plan conditional use review by the planning board is to promote the proper design. And construction of non-resident uses, multifamily residential, mining and similar activities in a manner. That is consistent with the general character and the environmental quality of the community. And preserves the safety and health and general welfare of the Town of Arundel. And that's what we're basing this on is we just did not think that having. That much traffic congested in that area was a good thing for the Town of Arundel. So. And like I said, as far as the traffic study goes, um, you know, you guys do, you know. Their traffic study, but, um, did you really do? Anything, um. As far as traffic behavior? You know, as far as watching the traffic, literally sitting there for say, you know. Couple of days, you know, once a week for, you know, a couple of months, just to see what the traffic did, you know? We're, we're also basing this on past, you know, of what we see. So. And again, that's, that was why we basically denied the applicant. Um, as far as the curb cuts, that was Lee Jay's thing. And like I said, Lee Jay is not here, um, that. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got just one.
Yes, go ahead.
On some of, just to, to clarify what you're, what you're thinking. So would you say the, the major consideration in your deliberation was more of what the, the additional? Traffic coming in and out of the food court would do to the existing traffic on Route One? Or would it have been more of a, the, the, uh, difficulty? Of vehicles turning, likely turning out of the food court. Onto, to get into the, the Route One stream of traffic.
Both, you know, because i- if you get traffic backed up from Ross Road all the way around, and I've seen it backed up as far as the older under market. And if you get traffic and. Like I said, this is, you know, different parts of the day, different times of the day. So if you get traffic trying to go in and out of the food trucks, also Walker's Lane, also Old Post Road. Okay, it's just, there is a traffic jam there that we really, in our opinion, didn't need to add to. You know, we didn't need to add more traffic to, to back that up further. And that, that's what we basically based it on.
If I, if I may. Um, just for the record, do you have a copy of that video that we could watch?
Yeah, I think I sent it.
I think, Jamel, can you?
We look at that. When was the video taken? When was, when was the video taken?
Yeah, go ahead, well, Jamel.
July.
Like, do you remember the time of day and day of week or anything like that?
Like it's two o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay, I'm on a weekday, was it?
You could see the time.
Was it? Okay. On the video? Okay.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I believe it's, I can check on my.
So I have a question while they're, um, getting this up on the screen. So when you were doing the site review, did you suggest? Any modifications or ideas that might? Enable traffic exiting and entering? The driveway that had been approved by DOT to make this project more viable?
Well, their first plan, they came in with an entrance onto Walker's Lane. Which we said was going to be just, you know, we couldn't do that because you add that much more traffic. Coming out of Walker's Lane and Walker's Lane is hard enough to get out of right now. Anybody that lives there, anybody that has to travel that road. Knows what the problem is to get out of Walker's Lane.
Is that, is that due to? A, a reduction in site distance for some reason, right there? But you know, just in that.
Like I said, I've.
Well, they, well, and I, I'm just not knowing the, the ins and outs of the project. I, I assumed that maybe. Maybe getting access on to Walker's Lane, they didn't have the legal right to.
Cause they had, I believe, coming in, if I remember correctly, coming in from the Water District. Curb cut and going out on, um. Walker's Lane at the time.
Did you, did you discuss like a right-hand turn only out of the, uh, out of the driveway? And no left-hand turn for those cars going north? Or, I mean, I'm just wondering what the discussion was all about ways in which you could make it. Uh, more palatable.
Well, again, that, you know, that could be, uh, you know, alternative, but you've also got the cars coming from Kennybunk. And with traffic backed up that far, they're going to back up traffic the other way into Kennybunk if somebody wants to try to get into the food trucks.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, if people aren't allowed to make a left-hand turn, that, but I don't know then how they would. Um, if they're coming south, they would be able to get into the project or get onto the driveway just by turning right. And if they were exiting, if they only turned right, then they would be going south again.
Right, yeah.
I don't know how.
I see that, but what about the people coming from Kennybunk?
I, I don't know.
Yeah.
So.
So like I said, it was just gonna back traffic up that we thought so bad. That it wasn't just now going to be, you know, a. Basically a safe thing. You know, to let happen.
Were, were there like specific numbers that were used to estimate as to how many? Additional vehicles would be added to the traffic that's already there? Or like, was it just kind of a gut feeling of?
Like I said.
There's a lot of traffic there already, so we don't want to add to it.
Anybody that knows the area and knows what's going on there, you know?
Yeah, that, that's what I'm saying. It was more of a, it's already backed up already. So it'll just add additional vehicles. Whether that's one or hundreds.
Yeah. Can, can everybody here see that screen? Other than, other than the planning board?
I can watch it on my phone.
Yeah. It just reminds me. It just reminds me, yes, please.
That was the intersection of Ross Road.
Was going north, right?
And that's headed north.
The backed up traffic is headed north, or you're, you're driving.
I'm driving north, yes, the backup traffic is headed into Kennybunk. That, that is, you know, in the summertime.
This is, this is.
You're coming up where the site's going to be for the food trucks.
Coming up to right there. Right there on the corner. They're right there with the yellow building there is, right there.
So they're going. This is the traffic going into.
Right here. No, that's a dance.
That was Luxus.
Yeah, I can.
That's the yellow, be old, sixty-nine, they're coming down with C M Brown.
Says two thirty, I don't know what day the weekend is.
Terry, can you, um, clarify when this was taken?
Uh, this is what I'm gonna do right now. See if I can bring that.
Just so that we can put it in the record.
July third.
Do you know what time it was?
Two thirty-two.
Two thirty-two, thank you.
So this is, whoops. Coming up to the driveway, right as we get over this guard ground. There.
Does the board have any more questions for, for Terry?
That is the dance, right there. We just passed.
There was there any?
Speak into the mic.
There any concern about the numbers ahead for the site, site views at four hundred feet?
I mean, they based that on, like I said, for the food truck. Curb cut, okay, but you kind of got to add Walker's Lane into that. Now, like I said, you've added so much traffic into that. Walker's Lane is very hard site distance wise to come out of. But people traveling north, if, I, I'm sorry, people traveling south, if you want to turn north, the people coming from Rundle goes Kennybunk, just. And they're not traveling thirty-five either, you know?
I think another thing to add to the mix is Old Post Road. Just, just coming out of there, uh, because I, I do that daily, and if, if there's a car on Walker's Lane, I, I know, I, I better watch out because I'm coming out when it's open with both, both roads are coming out at the same time, so taking a left-hand turn on both ends.
And, you know, we're, we're not against the food trucks. I mean, if that food truck goes up, say, across from, uh, where the farm stand is, you know, I don't, I don't think there'd be a problem with that because, you know, there'd be so much more um, site distance, it'd be, you know, they wouldn't be so congested. But where it is, we just didn't feel that it was safe for traveling.
Any other questions? Does the applicant have a rebuttal? Or any?
Yeah, yeah. We want to do public comment first?
Hey, hang on, Jeff, for a second. On, on the advice of counsel, does the public have any questions for Terry concerning this project? Well, comments?
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, please, and state your, state your name. No, stop the mic, don't let it roll off.
I'm Kurt Schillington, um, one fifty-four Walker's Lane. Um, and it's sort of anecdotal, but, but, you know, pulling out of Walker's Lane, anytime in the afternoon in the summer, you don't take a left turn, you take a right turn if at all possible. A left turn, you could wait literally five minutes for an opening to turn out of that road, if not longer, and it's dangerous. Um, someone died at that intersection several years back, or many years back, maybe about a dozen years back. Um, there's constantly accidents at Old Post Road. There's constantly, that, that intersection is dangerous. Adding that traffic where it's backed up and someone's trying to sneak their nose out of the car and trying to see if the, the southbound traffic is, or the northbound traffic coming down is in the way, it's going to cause accidents. And like I said, getting out of that road for the, you know, the ten residents that live on that road is difficult enough. Adding that additional traffic is, is going to be an issue for safety. And the other concern, I, I don't know if it's really relevant to the appeal, but is there's going to be parking, there's going to be people sneaking out of the Walker's Lane. And as I said earlier, that road is eighteen feet wide, doesn't meet the minimum standard of a road for the, for the town of Rundle, so additional traffic would be problematic on that road or that entrance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ma'am, you were going?
Deppa Riddon, I live across from Curran. I'm a walker. On Walker's Lane, but, um, what I notice is that you can see to the left sometimes, but people come around that curve in the breakdown lane, half their car in the breakdown lane. And I have a little car, I don't have a truck. And I'm not terribly brave. But, um, Tom, I didn't realize that was you. But to, to go out there and if you've got a pickup truck going south at the bridge, you know, they're crossing the bridge going south, and you're looking left and you, you kind of depend on somebody coming out of Old Post Road to know you can go turn going north. It's just really, and if you get your nose out far enough to see what's coming from the, the left, then you're out in the breakdown, you're out in the, that breakdown lane. And many times I've seen someone, you know, coming around that corner, and it's just scary. And I'm a coward, maybe, I don't know, but that's my concern, even walking back from Kennybunk, will be crossing the bridge and somebody's coming towards us with half his car on the breakdown lane, and we have to like, you know, back up to the bridge to be safe. So that's, and coming out of the food truck, I was, I drove into the food truck driveway, and because of the, um, the, what's the thing that goes over the bridge? The barricade there, the guardrail? I had to get out there to see around that because my car is low, and that was also scary. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Oh. Yeah, many of, very often. I know one, one neighbor who wasn't here, he came around one time, and he was in traffic and traffic was pushing him, he turned into Walker's Lane. It was almost an accident just turning in because he couldn't turn, slow down enough to get into Walker's Lane. Anyway, that's just one incident, but anyway, that's, my concern is those people coming around that corner with half their car on the road.
Thank you. Any, anybody else from the public have comments? Okay.
Doing my best to catch names off Deppa's.
Well, I was just going to say, you watch the video afterwards. Okay. Back to the applicants. And you can address the issues that Terry brought up and that the members of the audience brought up.
So, um, we do actually live right there on the intersection of Walker's Lane and Route One. So we do understand about the traffic for sure, and we did hear people bringing up Walker's Lane again, and we did move our entrance off of Walker's Lane. So we moved our entrance to the right significantly so that you do have much greater visibility in both directions. Um, that, that is one thing, and none of us like the traffic on Route One, I don't either. But the truth is that it backs up not just where we are, it backs up all the way up the hill, it backs up in front of the Wellness Center across from us that never did a traffic study, it backs up sometimes past us, past the Luxes, it some, sometimes, you know, goes all the way up through Kennybunk, past all the businesses up on the way to Kennybunk or Alma Joe's, it's just Route One in the summer has a lot of traffic. I guess what I'm asking is I don't see how there's something so very specific about our spot on Route One that is dangerous with traffic, and yet all of these other locations can have the traffic. I, I don't know, it, it's just very strange, but all I have.
And just, just to add to that, that in nineteen ninety-two, the town plan designated Route One and the DB One in two areas as high-growth areas, so it was expected that this is the future. Um, it also, uh, that portion of Route One is uh, a compact urban designated zone. So, again, traffic is expected in a compact urban zone.
One other thing is a lot of the backup comes from signaling, signaling issues. Um, I know that's one thing you raised in your traffic study, that there probably could be work done on the signals to alleviate some of that traffic. So there are solutions that can be done on the town level, town of Rundle, town of Kennybunk, to alleviate some of the traffic flow concerns that affect all of Route One, not just our lot. Um, one other thing I just wanted to say really quickly is that when we're talking about adding traffic, I think there's something, what, like fifteen thousand cars per hour or so? Oh, sorry, per day on Route One. Um, that there was a, a very small fraction of added cars likely to be added to the traffic due to our food trucks, that most of it would be people coming off of the road that are already sitting in traffic and get a taco and then pull back out and continue on their way. So I don't remember the exact number, but it was like a minuscule amount of traffic that was actually going to be.
It was, uh, it was like point four of a, of a trip, so every trip, point four of them are new generated. So if you imagine one food cart was estimated around seven new trips or seven trips an hour, then, you know, you can estimate three, three and a half would be new trips. And then you, you know, you estimate about a three or four hour eating window for, let's just say, one food truck, that's twenty-one trips. Fifteen, you know, twenty-one divided by fifteen thousand is a fractional of a percent. So we're talking about a fraction of a, of a percent.
To the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I don't think, um, I, I can't speak for everybody on the board, but my impression is that people uh, on the board, myself included, don't feel that the traffic per se, coming in and out of, uh, your food court area is going to exponentially uh, impact the traffic on Route One. Um, but I do think you have a fatal flaw insofar as people coming from Kennybunk going south, making a left-hand turn into your driveway. And unless you're willing to make modifications so that people can only enter if they are going south and you're willing to have them exit only going south, that would be the only way that I can see that you could mitigate some of the safety issues that are going to inherently be created by people who want to make a left-hand turn going north on Route One into your driveway. I mean, that's really the problem. And so, you know, if it's okay, the traffic can only exit your driveway to the right and can only enter making a right-hand turn, that would mean cars going south into Kennybunk. That limits, you know, the ability for traffic to access your food truck. But you happen to be in a very different part of the road from the Wellness Center, which has a large parking lot, and it's clear and it's much more visible. You happen to be just coming around the curve. And unfortunately, it's problematic. And so until you resolve, in my mind, that issue of going left into your driveway for those cars going north, I think you're stuck. I mean, I understand what they're saying, no matter how many cuts you have in your driveway or whatever.
Oh, just, just to clarify though, sorry, so the Wellness Center is opposite us, and we are farther from the curve than the Wellness Center, so they're closer to one A. And we're in the straightaway, we're farther from the curve that everyone refers to coming around, just to clarify.
Right at that corner, and it's very clear, and they have a huge parking lot. So, um, you know, the ability to get in there and get out of there and see what's going on. Um, I've driven by that spot, I've looked where you want to put the, the driveway and the food trucks. And it is, uh, not as visible, in fact, it's, uh, it's inconspicuous in comparison to the park, parking lot and the Wellness Center. And it's inconspicuous in comparison to Walker's Lane and the end. I mean, you just, you have to be looking for it, and then when people realize that there's a food truck there, they're going to stop, they're going to want to make the turn, they're going to want to get in there. And for those cars going north, trying to get into your driveway, I think it's a real issue. I really do. And I want you, I think the food truck is a great idea. I just think you have a logistical problem in terms of cars getting in there from, uh, that are not going south.
But that is, that is not a problem that we can solve, or that we should be addressing.
So, you know.
I agree with you, Susan. I think that, you know, some kind of mitigating efforts would go a long way, in, in my mind, to, uh, help alleviate, uh, the concern that Site Plan Review Committee had of maintaining safe traffic conditions in that area.
I don't think it's the number of cars per se, that necessarily adding a number of cars to Route One, I don't think really that's the issue. At least it, it isn't for me. The issue is getting in and out of that driveway, depending on which direction uh, you're coming from.
So as far as the two reasons for denial, this has come under, I mean, it's obviously not curb cuts.
So.
It doesn't have to. That's the whole, the normal standard, it's just like, we're looking at the whole question. I'm, I'm just unclear. Susan, what, what you're saying is the safety is, the, the concern for the safety is the, for the vehicle that is stopping to turn and potentially getting hit by cars that are continually going on Route One north?
What I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm trying to figure out what the safety concern.
For those cars going north.
Yeah.
Okay, into Bitterford.
Right.
Or heading towards.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever. Um, you would have to cross the double yellow line and the traffic going south into Kennybunk and get into that driveway.
Right.
And if you want to get out, not only are the people from Walker's Lane trying to get out and go left.
Yeah, I, I, I think I understand if you're leaving the facility, I wasn't sure what you meant by if you're trying to get in.
The only way to get in and out is to make a right-hand turn into the parking lot to access the food truck.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry.
Turn out of the parking lot.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what is the safety concern of making a left-handed turn into the parking lot?
That, that you're essentially, that traffic backed up along that stretch and you're having.
So it's a, it's a traffic issue, not a safety issue. To let you in, yeah, for sure. But I, I, I just wasn't sure because you mentioned safety, I don't know if it was a concern of people getting hit or cars getting in accidents, or if it's just a, it's going to build up a bunch of traffic all the way back to Ross Road intersection.
You know.
I'm, I'm, I'm just asking for clarification.
What I'm saying is, you know, people want to get in there and they're trying to figure out how they can cross the lane and
Sure.
you know, people don't want to let you in, and then, you know, you think you see an opening, I mean, it's are there going to be more accidents? I don't know, but is there a lot of angst and tension as a result? And is it, um, you know, does it create situations where more accidents and things can happen? I believe so. And so hence my comment.
Okay, and I understand that, what you're saying. Uh, I just wanted to mention one thing about, uh, you mentioned it's very inconspicuous, and part of our plan was to widen the entrance to meet the standards. So that was part of our entrance approval, that it would be wider to widen to the standard size. Um, also, if we had a parking lot there, I do believe it would be more conspicuous, and you would be able to see the parking lot as well as the food trucks and the sign. So I think that, you know, while it wouldn't be paved like the Wellness Center, I think it would be more visible, that's all I wanted to add.
I agree. I think that that helps, but it still doesn't solve the issue of those cars going north.
I can, I can understand the issue of cars going north. You don't want to get rear-ended. At least not again. And I would be concerned that that would happen because I don't want to disparage tourists. They bring a lot of money to Maine, and I think they're wonderful people because they can, they come up here. But they're not familiar with the area, they're not going to know. Oh, there's a food court, they're going to. They're going to slam on their brakes and try to make a turn and they're going to get rear-ended. That would be the safety issue that I have with the whole thing. I can't get down Route One into Kennybunk at eight o'clock in the morning, never mind any, any other time of day. I think that, I, I think it would create a problem. And I understand that you have a traffic study that shows that there's four hundred plus feet. I just can't see it. I've, I've gone over there and I've looked at it. Maybe I'm just too old.
It's four sixty.
Was it from Walker's Lane that you were looking or was it from our food court exit?
It was from Walker's Lane, to be honest.
Okay, yeah, so that's a different measurement. That's not where our exit is. We're not at Walker's Lane.
But it's only one hundred and two.
Hundred and thirty feet farther.
Is it really?
Yes.
Wow.
The whole little field of grass.
You see, I, when I look down, I see all of those trees and I go, how do you see around all of these trees?
When you get there, you're further out on the bend.
It has a scale on it, so I presume it's, it's accurate to some degree.
It just doesn't feel like it's a hundred and thirty feet when you, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think, sorry, I think part of the trouble we've had throughout the process of this application is a lot of people have been going to Walker's Lane and not our site. And so they've gone and, and, you know, of course, it's innocent, innocent mistake. That's the way the traffic flows. But they don't get the same, you don't get the same perspective unless you go to the actual entrance.
Okay.
That's.
I, I understand what you're saying. I just don't understand why it's any different than any other business owner.
Yeah.
Oh, but I'm not saying it's any different. I'm saying that's my safety concern.
Such a traffic and safety concern there versus any other business owner that has to turn left?
Because you, from, from my perspective, you have a huge amount of traffic going in both directions. And you don't, if, if you, if you go past River Road, it almost comes to an end. It's like, you know, I don't know what DOT did with the lights, but you, you head north past River Road, you don't run into any traffic and you don't run into any traffic heading south until you get to River Road.
All right, just as a.
Yeah, it's, it's very.
As a, as a witness on the corner there, we work from home and we do see the flow of the backup. It does tend to be somewhat random, but in the mornings it backs up at rush hour and clears out by about tenish or so. During school years, it backs up because Ross Road becomes busy with high schoolers coming home. But that's out of our season. But that typically will create a backup because the light turns green for Ross Road more frequently. Most of the problem is coming from that Kennybunk light. I did talk to Maine DOT and they said that's a Kennybunk Town question. So it does appear to be timing.
And they came out and I called DOT and they told me that it's actually within the jurisdiction of the town of Kennybunk. They're the ones who set the timing. And they did come out and it seemed anecdotally to be better, but now it's just as bad.
I agree. It, it was good for a while and then it changed. I mean, it's, it's the town, yeah. And just a side question, as a town of Arundel, could we as, as a town say, hey, your, your light is affecting our town in a negative way? I mean, is it?
It did.
Yeah, it did, yeah.
Yes, and I did.
Okay.
Yeah, as a member of the planning board.
Thank you.
So, and it still didn't do any good.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Any comments from the public or is everybody happy with what you've already put forth? I'm going to assume that everybody has said their piece. At this point, I am going to close the public hearing. And now the board gets to deliberate. Just thought I'd ask. Okay, gentlemen, ladies, questions? Things, what are you thinking? Should I, should I poll everybody and get an idea?
I think.
Yeah, absolutely, please.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I think that, again, I'm being a little bit pedantic here, but I think it always is helpful to look at what the criteria is and refresh the board's memory as to what your job is, right?
Yes.
So the job here is to determine, and I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna go back to the ordinance if I may, bear with me. Okay, so on appeals, the authority of the board is this. The planning board may affirm or reverse in whole or in part, or may modify any order or decision, blah, 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 regarding the decision of the administrative, excuse me, the, the staff review committee and may issue or direct the issuance of a permit if you find that they erred, right? And so, again, we look at what the basis of appeal is and that the aggrieved party requests the appeal. And their burden is to conclusively demonstrate that the decision in granting or denial of the administrative site plan or conditional use review is in error and a misinterpretation of Section 10 of this ordinance. And if you recall, the four corners of this appeal is very narrow under Section 10. It's that subsection, so it's Section 10, six, four, sub six. And this is the criteria, the only criteria that the staff review committee determined was not met. The proposed project will not have an adverse onsite and offsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or neighborhood. And so that's your task to determine or whether or not you think the staff review committee essentially got it wrong. Now, again, you have heard all the evidence. You have the submissions of the party, the submissions of the staff review committee, the video, members of the public. All of that evidence that you have before you is what you should be considering in your determination as to whether or not this standard has been.
So Leah, can you read, reread the sentence that has the word modified in it?
Sure, meaning what your authority is?
Yes.
You bet. So the authority of the board, again, this is your jurisdiction. The planning board may affirm, reverse in whole or in part, or may modify any order or decision. And to that end, shall have all the powers of the officers from whom the appeal is made, meaning that's the staff review committee, and may issue or direct the issuance of an administrative site plan conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
What section was that, Leah?
The one that I just read?
Yep.
Sure. That is, go ahead.
Section 10.
Yep, but it's.
Yeah, a little more, oh, ten, ten?
Ten, ten, I believe it's one seventy-two in the ordinance.
Second, that's a subsection, so it's ten, ten, one, sub, one.
Yeah, I think you should. I suggest that you hold the board.
Okay. Since you've made that suggestion, Susan, I'll start with you.
So I don't think the staff review board got it wrong, based on my personal thinking, my opinion. But I think it could be modified to make it work.
Okay. Jamie?
Yeah, I, I mean, based on the numbers of existing traffic volume on Route One and what the three, you know, additional trucks would, would create. You know, they're not going to create a, they're not going to, they're not going to exacerbate the existing condition that's going on right there due to the stoplight on Route One. Now, that being said, sort of to Susan's point, I do think there are some pretty straightforward mitigating efforts that could be made by the applicant that would, that would make me feel confident in granting an approval based on the, the traffic if they were, would be willing to do that.
Paul?
I'm torn on this one, I'll be honest with you. I, I, I understand what the committee did. I get it, especially with those three corners altogether. It's a mess down there. I get it. I go by that a lot too. But I'm also sitting back thinking that if this was, you got a lot, you got a business, if it's not that business and it's something else, would it make a difference? I just. If we're going to go strictly based on the safety of the three-corner issues and unfortunately we're putting the traffic issue, denying it because of that, I don't think they got that wrong. You know, but unfortunately, I think it's a monkey that we own as a town. And if there was a way we could go figure out how do we control the traffic down there?
Tom?
I am torn on this as well. For, I, I think it's, it'd be great to have that in, in town. I think it'd be a good business to have and I would be a customer many, every week. And I don't know what other better use you could have for that property because from what I understand, you couldn't build on it. It's a tight spot. However, I drive there every day and every time I pull out of, especially in summer, every time I pull out of Old Post Road, I'm just waiting to get hit. And it, it, my wife won't pull out there. She goes, take, go at the four-way stop sign, goes out to the lights that, on where the old Arundel market was. And she thinks I'm crazy because I dare to take, I'm a little bit of a daredevil. But it, it just, to me, it's the most dangerous intersection in, in town. I've, I've been always assuming eventually the town's going to have some one-way or some, something, or block off Old Post Road right there, direct everybody to the lights. And because of it, because I, I understand, because I, I fear that, that risk of pulling out, I think it comes down to a safety issue for me, that I would hate to have my name on something, approving something that where someone would get hit there, someone would get hurt.
Okay. Zachary?
I, on a personal level, struggle with this one because I want Arundel to grow in any way that it can, whether that's population or businesses, food, whatever it is. But, you know, my attorney brain kicks on when I'm looking at stuff like this. And I know that the, the burden for all of these things lies on the applicant and that they need to show us that. And the wording is very specific and I don't love the wording, but this is what, you know, is in place, that there will have no, I'm sorry, will not have an adverse onsite and offsite impact on existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation. In my opinion, unfortunately, the report done by TY Lynn is limited in its ability to persuade me that there is no impact. I don't disagree. It might be minimal. You know, I, I don't think you're going to get a hundred cars an hour going to the food trucks to reach that level of an additional report. However, because the, the wording in it is very specific in that it will not have an impact at all, tells me that we can't know that one way or the other. And so for me, because that burden hadn't been met, I can't agree with overturning what was done with the previous committee. And that's kind of where my thought process lies.
Marty?
Yeah. The idea of the food trucks and everything else is a great idea. But, again, we have Route One with the cluster it is in all the time. And I can see the safety point of what the review board did and everything else for the sake of not having accidents and just a plain cluster. I, I agree with them, but the fact is that DOT doesn't listen to Arundel per se. If you really think about it, you look at DOT, they've had years, even before VIP came in, they were supposed to widen the road out. That's why everything else is along the way, where the center line is and the width of the road. I mean, they even had double thoughts about when they were doing the bridge. So, I mean, and you aren't going to put a stoplight down there. God help us, and we've been fighting with a turn directional for, on the River Road, on the old River Road and Route One and Old Limerick Road. And they still haven't done that yet. Look how, look how they're trying to do it on Law Cabin Road and Campground Road. So unfortunately, I gotta agree with and say no.
Okay, so I need a motion to either uphold the staff review committee or to overturn them and grant the applicant their permit.
And can I ask a question?
Oh, sure. Yeah, go right in.
I mean.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't.
A question that, that I posed, would you all be in any way willing to, to establish a write-in, write-out only?
I mean, I think we're open to, yeah, obviously, solutions. You know, we want to be solution-based. Yeah, I mean, I, I can tell you that when we first went into this and met with Lee J, we were proposing a food truck. And according to Lee J at the time, it was, you needed three, you needed to open a food court in order to have food trucks if there's no existing business. Since then, and so we went down this path, but since then I have discovered that that is true in Kennybunk, but in Arundel, that's not accurate. So, you know, other options are, we, we were aiming for one food truck. We ended up with Bozil for a food court, which is, we, we've adapted and gone along this process. So as far as, as, you know, solution-based, we'd also be interested in limiting the number of vendors as well to just the one. So we have, we're open to solutions. I, I guess is, is what I'm saying there and if that makes any sense.
Well, the solution really is in entering and exiting your driveway.
Okay.
And I think all of us want to see your business succeed at what happened and succeed.
Right.
And so we're not deliberately throwing up roadblocks.
Oh, no, I understand.
You know, that's why I asked Leah about the word modified.
Okay.
And if I, can I, may I just address that issue, just lest there be any misunderstanding? I absolutely, the, the wording is clear that they, that this board can modify the decision. But I think what's critical for us to understand is that I don't, because that decision was based on a particular plan and proposal, I don't think we can modify the proposal here. If that, and I'm not assuming that that's what you were planning on doing.
No.
Right, but, but I don't think we can modify, to, to modify the decision, the decision itself is based on a particular plan. And so I don't think we, this board has the authority in this context to modify a, a decision that was based on a, a, a plan. Do you know what I'm saying? I don't think we can modify the plan here.
Right, so without being their counsel, how do they regroup?
I think they would have to do that in another context, not here.
Okay.
So I, of course.
Go ahead.
If, if they, if we voted to uphold the, the decision, they lose your appeal, does that get in the way of them coming back to us with, with a?
Yeah, and that's something I hesitate to say too much on, but I will speak not necessarily about Arundel's ordinance because I haven't had. Arundel's ordinance because I haven't had a chance to answer that, look at that question. But as a general proposition in most ordinances and many ordinances, what it says is, is that you can't come back to a board within a certain period of time unless there's a substantial change in that application. And the, the ideas that have been referenced here, again, you know, I'd, I'm, I'm speaking generally, not here in this context, but that kind of change is the kind of change that I think would rise to the level of substantial enough change to, to warrant a new application. And, and remember, under this ordinance, you know, you've got the bifurcated, um, review. You have the staff review. You have the planning board, but I think there are particular circumstances when that can get kicked up to the planning board, right? Um, again, that's a different question for a different day, but just to keep those ideas in mind.
I, I just want to make it clear. My, uh, decision is not based on an adjustment like that. I don't think that that would qualify to change the reasons. I think for me, a lot of the basis of the appellant's, uh, reasoning as to why they would qualify under section six is based on a report from TY Lynn, which I don't think provides enough evidence to explain why this, these specific data numbers that were given and analyzed is enough evidence to say that there would not be an impact on the traffic pattern on that site. Um, you know, there, there are numbers that were used outside of the, of the time of year that they were proposed. Uh, numbers from different locations and older numbers that were taken. Um, and there isn't any evidence to show that even if there were three additional cars per day, that that wouldn't have an impact on the traffic pattern. Um, it's, it seems to me that it's more of a, there might be ten and that doesn't reach a certain threshold. And so therefore we're not going to qualify that as an impact. Um, and that just doesn't reach the, the standard that is required and that the applicant needs to provide the evidence to support why they feel they meet that requirement. So I, you know, I, I would love to see, you know, more proposals like this or even this one resubmitted with changes. Um, I just don't think that making it only right-hand turn in or out will alleviate that burden that I don't think was met. That's all.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
I don't think right on right it would work, but I don't think it would pass because it would have too much impact by your fellow people who live on Walker Lane. It's going to affect all them if they had to do right on right year round. And you aren't gonna and you aren't going to have people say, well, I'll go this way for six months and then we'll have open turn for the rest six months. And if you go even by what you come out of, uh, where, uh, the subway is, you, you have people that turn it around and say, um, no left-hand turns, only one right-hand turn. And sit across at the bank, CD Bank right there and watch how many people, even with the light and double lane there and everything else, how many people turn left where you're not even supposed to. Unfortunately, I don't think right on right is going to cure.
And Marty, just to, just to be clear, my, um, suggestion of a, of a write-in, write-out would only apply to their situation, their entrance, not, you know, we, we don't have the jurisdiction to apply that to others up and down that aren't in front of us for anything. It would only be, it would only, it would only be for, for their, their entrance, not Walker Lane or others existing driveways or entrances along Route one.
Well, what I was referring to is because the only way to get to where their food court would be, you had to turn onto Walker's Lane.
No. No, Marty, they have carved down a separate.
Yeah.
And.
Entrances between Walker's Lane and the bridge.
It's a hundred and thirty feet beyond Walker's Lane, going towards Kennybunk, going seven.
But to Marty's point though, to require to a, uh, left, heading north, to require no left turn, it would have to be a post sign saying no left turn, which I think would, would it, well, which, which, no, no left turn would also imply, include Walker's Lane. Where you're going to have a little note saying Walker's Lane is okay. It's, it, so if someone's but it actually, it's, it's not even before, so it probably not even more disgusting.
Until Walker's Lane, you still got.
We, we should move on.
That's what I was.
Okay.
That's what I was referring to.
And now we're back to the question of, of having a motion to, to either uphold the staff review or to reject the staff review and grant them their permit.
I'll, I'll move to uphold the staff review as previously noted.
Is there a second?
What was your? To uphold the previous decision?
I'll, I'll second that.
Motion made by Zachary, seconded by Tom McGinn to uphold the staff review. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? It is unanimous.
So, Mr. Chairman, just, um, just a point of procedure. Um, given that this is a municipal board, they have to issue a written decision. My suggestion is, I've certainly heard, um, all the evidence and the board's sort of, um, what I've heard their assessment of that, based on that, um, would you like me to draft some findings and conclusions that can be taken up by this board at its next meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay. And when is that next being?
Next Tuesday, August sixth.
Yeah, right? Is there a next, next?
After that, it's August twentieth.
Okay. Is it fair to say that I will certainly make best efforts to do that for the sixth, but if not, then they'll be ready for the twentieth? Is that okay?
That'll be fine.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other business?
No, that is the end of our business. Somebody make a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
We are done. Get a second.